Call to order.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
McCorkle?
Here.
Mara?
Here.
Jernigan?
Here.
Here, sorry.
Belt?
Here.
Belt?
Here.
Longbreak.
There.
Recess the city council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Public hearing is closed. We do, on the executive session, we do have changes on that. Let's see, F will be, A will be the first one, and then after that, C will be the second. Then we have, let's see, then we have D and, D and then.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
So A will go first.
Right, it goes first.
And then we're going to go, B will be, B will be, go to E, F, A will go to F.
Right.
And then we're just going to go in order from there.
Okay.
So A, B, C, D, then A and E are now E and F.
Right.
Moving those to the end because of the conflicts that have been,
Okay.
That have been provided. And so, and the conflicts are.
Yeah, so the conflicts on what is currently listed as item A is conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation. And that's one potential case adverse to MIH entities. And so the two conflicts we have are councilmember Pogue and councilmember Campbell on that. And both of those arise from the fact that their sons work at MIH. And the next item is B, which is conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 and/or 3 or and/or 4. And this pertains to a potential case against Rio Buena Vista HOA. And on this matter, councilmember McCorkle has declared a conflict because she lives in the housing development that's immediately adjacent to the Rio Buena Vista development. And then item C, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation. And this relates to a potential case adverse to Otana Planet Green. Item D, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. And that's one potential case adverse to Wolfpack Inc., which is a cannabis business here in town. And then E is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. There's a typo on the agenda that says point five, it's point eight. And the APN is listed in the agenda. The negotiating parties are the Lamar Companies as prospective less C and the City of Needles as prospective less or under negotiation or price and terms. And then item F is conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. And the name of that case is Teamsters Local 1932 versus City of Needles Housing Authority and California Public Employee Employment Relations Board unfair practice charge. And the case number is listed. And that's all the items.
We'll have executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item A was NPUA council conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. One potential case adverse to MIH entities. There was no reportable action. Item B was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D2 and/or 3 and/or 4. One potential case adverse to Rio Buena Vista HOA. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item C was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. One potential case adverse to Otana Planet Green, OPG. There was no reportable action taken. Item D, conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. One potential case adverse to Wolfpack Inc. No reportable action. Item E, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. For the APN listed in the agenda, the negotiating parties, the Lamar Companies as the prospective less C and the City of Needles as prospective less or. And there was no reportable action taken on that item. And then item F, we did have reportable action. And that was existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. And the name of the case, Teamsters Local 1932 versus the City of Needles Housing Authority. And the, there was action taken on that. There was a motion to approve a settlement agreement. There had been a legal action that had been initiated by the Teamsters Local Union 1932 for an unfair labor practice charge. And there is a settlement that's been prepared where the city would pay 2,008, city slash housing authority would pay $2,832.60. And there was a motion to approve that settlement. And that motion, the first was made by councilmember Campbell, the second by councilmember Longbreak, and the vote in favor. And the mayor, I understand, votes on the housing authority. And so I'll record that vote as well. So Jernigan was yes, in favor of the motion. Merritt was in favor, Campbell was in favor, Longbreak was in favor. Pogue was in favor. McCorkle was in favor, and Belt was in favor. And that concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America under God, in his fault, with the routine and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. May you generously give to each of us wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our city. Give the mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. We thank you for our city, our elected officials, for the trust bestowed upon us, for the businesses, churches, and families, the individuals, our visitors, and our surrounding communities who all help to make our city of Needles the great destination that it is. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Approval of the agenda?
I approve.
I'll start.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes. Oh, here.
Only in the time. Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
Councilmember Long?
Yes.
And do we have a conflict of interest tonight? Did you have anybody? No. Okay. Correspondence? Thank you. Introductions, we have past counselors, Tim Terrell, Zach Longacre, Sean Goodmanson. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
City attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of parliamentary procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the NPUA city council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address, for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code section 54950 prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Okay. Sheila.
Sheila Miller, 2021 Cardi Circle Needles. I'm here because it's been since 2011 that we've had a grocery store. And I'm thinking, a lot of people are thinking enough is enough. It's been, I mean, what is it, every year we go to Vegas begging somebody to come here? We have a petition, Stater Brothers, I mean, that's nice, but they don't have to pay attention to that. And then to quote, you know, they're just not that into us. Okay? We are a desert, a food desert here. And so I know that when this first happened, the idea of a food co-op or the city running something, people suggested that. And it was like, no, 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 we'll bring in someone else. Nothing's happened. It's, people are having to drive up to Bullhead, to Fort Mojave. I mean, we all know exactly how it is. It really is a disservice to the people who live here. I know the city, I don't know if you're still doing it, but was doing a bus up there. It's a pure disservice to the people in the city. And the food here, I know small markets have tried, but it, we don't have the fresh produce, we have unhealthy food. It's just not right. And so I did a little bit of research, other towns have had the same problem. And they start up city-run places, co-ops. I have one here, we went to a food desert. We went shopping in a food desert with little access to healthy food. And here's what we found. Supermarket chains ignored this black community, so residents opened a co-op. We're not a black community, I mean, majority-wise, but yeah, we're a food desert. They don't, our economics, our demographics, they don't care about us. They, we will not give them the money. They will not make the money that they want. They are business, totally understandable. But we have to do something. Grocery stores and co-ops. Baldwin, Florida opens a rare town-run grocery store to fill the gap. Chicago explores the possibility of a city-owned co-op. Even the USDA, Department of Agriculture, has information on starting a co-op. I print out those, this was 57 pages long, I only printed the first couple and the last page. So I'd like to give this to the mayor, if I may, I didn't make prints for everybody because ink is expensive. My suggestion is, I think everybody here on the council is new since we lost Bashes. We have a new city manager. I mean, maybe fresh ideas. We have fresh people, fresh ideas. Hire, we've got extra money from our grow-up stuff, I don't know, find the money. Hire either a supermarket-type manager person or a consultant, either full-time, because it's somebody to come in who knows how to run a grocery store. We've got the building. Just somebody to kickstart it, get it going, bring it in. I don't know if it's called a co-op, I don't know if it would just be a store run by our town. I don't know, but we have to do something because this is just ridiculous, and I don't see it changing. Nobody sees it changing. I mean, I just would love to see something happen. I know that everybody here cares about everybody in the town. We just have to kind of show that we do and actually do something for the people here that need these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Zach?
Good evening, council. Zach Longacre, 1519 Front Street. Still nothing on the skate park. Let's get that bench in, let's get the trees in. We're seeing other construction up there now. And the skate park wasn't part of the grant, it's already paid for. I know that for a fact because my artists were paid already, so. Let's get that done. Have staff do it, have staff put the bench in, save thousands. Still no stop sign on Front Street. That was voted by five prior council members. This is the second time I've been up here. When someone gets T-boned, you're liable. That's that. What else? The dirt road on the ballpark? I guess it's a dirt road again. I saw the letter that says it was supposed to be tailed multiple times, padded down and, and secured. So we should be doing that and not arguing with Santa Fe about doing it again because we never finished the job in the first place. We need to quit arguing about bathrooms and get on some serious things, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Oh, I got it. Of course.
Thank you, Zach.
Next.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Elizabeth.
I'm Marcel. And we're here because we just opened a clothing store called Bee Fly Clothing. And we just like to, just to up the community because I've been living here for the past five years. And it's, it's hard to go from Los Angeles to getting clothes and having a bunch of stores in there where it's easy to reach. You know, to come in here to have nothing to even call or even make an appointment to go get, you know, or even get it shipped home. You know, we gotta go call, we gotta get clothes offline or go to Vegas or drive to Bullhead or go to Keeman or Lake Harassou to get clothing. So we decided together to come together and open our own clothing store called Bee Fly Clothing. We do custom clothing, we do jerseys, hats, socks, shoes. We, everything is name brand, everything is brand new, it's nothing like a thrift store. Everything freshly bought with tags and everything.
We have orders with the schools, the Commerce Center, local people around the area ask us to make all kinds of clothes, hats, the rec center. We just need a little bit of help, keep us around, keep people in our community. We don't have to go to all the way to Bullhead to make our brand shirts for Needles. So we can keep it in Needles and progressively get, get there.
Yeah, we like, we just opened a clothing store, it was like, we sell shoes, socks, and small, solid things, underwear, bras, like, we sell it for kids, women, men, small, big, large, just for everyone, it's for everyone in the community, it's not just for us, you know what I'm saying, it's for everyone. So that people, even for the people that's close to us, you know, to make them come enjoy our city that where we at, you know, see them how, how, well, we can prosper for them, help them out, you know, because it's, it's small, it's a small city, but it's also a blessing because it's so much that you can profit from here, you can gain from here, the knowledge, the education, and more things that we can do here, you know, with the rec center doing activities, basketball, you know, sports like that. It's a good way to jump into the community by offering jersey wear or sport wear or, you know, fishing wear or what, you know, things, things that entertain us as a community, you know? So we just want to introduce ourselves to those around, to everyone, to councilman, mayor, and say, thank you for having us, and we enjoy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good to meet you.
Thank you. Wayne? Where are they?
Wayne Colburn, 2297, yeah. Yeah, 2237, Casaloma Street. It's late, I've been hard, working hard today. Anyway, just wanted to give you a couple of things that are happening over at the chamber. We're real excited as it's starting to grow. So we're coming into the Christmas season, we do have a virtual seeds candy store. I've been putting it out on the flyers and stuff and getting it out around the city to different places to show it, to support the chamber, to help us grow, and again, helping the city to grow ultimately through that. And the other thing that I was wanting to just touch on is we've started the process for our 2024 golf tournament. It's going to be on the 24th of February, so it's going to be that last Saturday in February. We'll be starting to go around and being able to do the, getting our sponsors and everything. So if you know of somebody who wants to play golf, Patrick, look forward to seeing him out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you. Presentation, presentation by Ronald G. Dowdy Esquire of a gift from the Karen Kippi A. Poulsen Estate to the Needles Animal Shelter and the Needles Museum.
Thank you, councilmembers. Again, my name is Ron Dowdy, I'm a local attorney here in town. My office address is 121 F Street, down there by Michael Berger's CPA office. I've had the privilege of being an attorney here in town. Some of you folks have used my services over the past for all different types of things. I had the privilege to meet a wonderful person, he was a founder, been in this town for a lot of years, spent the majority of her life here. And I was lucky enough to come in and be appointed by her to be her trustee when the ultimate time came, where she wanted to make gifts to people and entities that she really cared for. One of the recipients that I'm going to give to is the City of Needles through the Animal Shelter, and the other one is the Needles Museum. She's over Kippi's, Karen A. Poulsen is her name, but she goes, everybody in town, I believe, knows her as Kippi. She worked at both of those locations over the years and cared for them and wanted everyone to share in her prosperity. I'd like to call up a couple individuals, representative from the animal control and another from the museum, or a couple from the museum. Just want to introduce yourselves, probably well-known, but go ahead.
My name is Tony Rukaba, I'm the senior animal patrol officer for the City of Needles.
My name's Christina Parrot, I'm the animal attendant for the animal shelter here in town.
And I'm Ariane Jones, and I'm the president of the Needles Regional Museum.
I'm Kathy McConnell, I'm a board member for the museum and pretty much a lifelong friend of Kippi's.
Kippi's. Put tundra on your desk. As a side story, in the process of wrapping up Kippi's estate, I got the luxury of being assistant to handling quite a few animals, peacocks were her specialty. Rob, what did we determine? Thirty-eight. About thirty-eight peacocks, some of which are still circling the area and probably will return. Beautiful animals and something she obviously seriously cared about, which is why one of her gifts, 50% of her estate going to Needles Animal Shelter to care for future animals, stay neutered, I'm sure you might need a bathroom there, and anything that's going to benefit the animals in the future. And then she was worked for the museum and these young ladies here for many years and wanted whatever was available to go to them, make it a better place and continue the history of the museum.
Thank you. Are yours, sir? Good night, all.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. WUSA.
Yes, interviews to be held and possible appointment to the Housing Commission to fill two vacancies.
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any applications, so we're going to extend it moving forward.
Okay. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Authorize the wastewater treatment plant replacement effluent equalization pumps from flow systems not to exceed $54,000 using the capital replacement fund, staff.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, member of the council in front of you, we have a request for a $54,000 purchase, there are three pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. And basically, two of them are going out, two of the three, we're in, we went out, maybe, went out to bid, received five quotes. Of those five quotes, the lowest bids are going to buy two of the two pumps for $53,414. There is $350,000 in the account. Again, this is for the effluent equalization pumps that are needed to be able to treat. So this is something that we need to do to be able to keep sustainability of the wastewater treatment plant. And our expedition is approved. And it has been approved by the utility board as well, right under seven.
A motion? Do we approve? We need to.
I have one question.
Sure.
This is already in their capital replacement fund?
So this is part of the, no, so of the $350,000 in the capital replacement fund, they're going to need it for the replacement of these pumps. So we're going to take 50, or 54,000 out of the capital base fund to be able to make the improvement. We did an analysis that found out recently that two of the three pumps aren't working.
But this will cover the replacement of those pumps then? Not that we're going to take, need more after this?
Correct, the 54,000 will, is part of the procurement to take the two pumps, and we will use, we will take it out of the $350,000 that are certainly in the asset replacement fund. The capital replacement fund, excuse me.
I'll second that, Ed. Thank you. Call for the vote?
Yes. Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Place Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Longbreak?
Yes.
Rescind the action taken at the October 10th, 2023 meeting regarding the cost of living COLA. Increase in electric base, basic service charge rate and approve a corrective COLA increase in the electric basic service charge rate as of December 1st, 2023. Approve an overhydro rate of .01538 effective December 1st, 2023, and continue the 0.1 additional overhydro rate established as of August 1st, 2023, making the overhydro rate 0.1638 effective December 1st, 2023. And approve the methodology to calculate the annual electric, electric base rate and the power cost adjustment rate based on the rate calculation spreadsheets, staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, what you have in front of you is actually not a rescind, we're not rescinding it, we're actually amending it, starting to make the motion. Please add that we are amending the action that was taking place on October 10. So on October 10, the city council adopted a rate that was at 01.467, and the corrected rate is actually 01538. What had happened was during the calculation that took place, the line loss number was actually supposed to be 10.10 as opposed to 10.01. When the formula took place, it wasn't calculated properly, and it was brought to our attention after the fact. So when, what we have in front of you is basically a correction of the rate. And it will, the impact, what we'll infer is the sample winter bill for the electric charge on the current rate is $314.73. At the point where we are making the amendment today, the proposed bill is going to be 320.94. So basically, there's a $6 difference for the utility bill that's going to take place. And again, we have this shared responsibility to ensure that our rates are covered, O and M reserves, and paying off the bondholders. Basically, we're maintaining the rate methodology to calculate the annual electric base. What we're doing is updating the rate so it properly shows what it's supposed to be so that we're not going in the moment moving forward.
Any questions by council? Okay.
Is the $6 spread out over those months then?
The $6 is per utility bill. So if you go to the last page, you'll see a sample proposed utility bill, so.
Oh, per bill?
Yeah.
Bill will show a sample bill charge for 314. That's between that, those time periods, because this will come back, we have to do it, we have to look at the quality again. So but for that time period from October to February, we're looking that there's going to be a $6.21 cent increase for the total electric bill charge. Amend, now, please.
Okay, so, so the reason we're amending it is because it was just a grammatic, like a typographical error on.
Yes.
Okay.
Transposition.
Yes, that's the word.
Motion? A public comment? No public comment, public comments closed, call for the motion.
I move to amend the action taken on October 10th to reflect the new numbers.
Sorry.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And councilmember?
Yes.
Adjourn the joint NPUA council meeting and convene a joint Sarda council meeting. Public comments pertaining to the Sarda council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Any public comment? If none, public comment is closed. Approve the resolution number eleven dash fourteen dash twenty-three, Sarda declaring Sarda's completion of its responsibilities with respect to winding down the affairs of the former redevelopment agency of the City of Needles and requesting dissolution pursuant to California HC, HSC three four one eight seven B and taking related actions, staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
I just want to highlight how big of a feat this is and who's going to assist me in providing the background is Mr. Steve Duquette, who is with TKE, who was with Urban Futures when he started this team ten years ago. And so with that, I wanted to introduce Mr. TVP. He drove all the way out here just to do this final presentation, this culmination of the long process that the city had to go through, will highlight it and go through it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I asked for permission to do this. In all my communications with the council and with your oversight board when you had one, it was done by telephone, given the great distance involved. But I asked for permission to do this with the promise there will be no charge for travel because I really feel how important this is and I wanted to appear before you to do it. And before I make the presentation, and I think you'll get this as we get into it, I'd like to quote a very, very short proverb, but very pithy, as it relates to what we're talking about tonight. It is, "A desire accomplished is sweet to the soul." That happens, by the way, Proverbs thirteen nineteen, so I just didn't pick it out of three, thin air. The redevelopment wind down process began February first, twenty twelve. That's right after Jerry Brown killed every redevelopment agency in California. And I think there was a bad record on the part of few, but it was certainly not Needles. Needles was very productive and proactive to do what was right for the, for the city. And if that had not been dissolved, many of the things you've talked about over the years and some tonight would have been resolved otherwise to your redevelopment agency. So it's, it's a shame that happened, but it did. So at, at that particular point, I was providing services to twenty-eight different cities winding down their redevelopment agencies, predominantly associated with getting their financial approvals. So in the case of Needles, Needles has met the requirements to dissolve and they're basically real simple. Number one, have all the financial obligations been repaid? And number two, has all the real property formerly owned by the redevelopment agency that was then under the auspices of the successor agency been transferred or sold? There is another condition having to do with whether there's any active litigation. Of course, there's not. There was back in the day. I thought it was quite meritorious, but the judge in Sacramento didn't agree. So anyway, that's, that's where that particular thing is. With respect to your financial debts, they were accomplished during August of twenty twenty-two with the final payment on your redevelopment agency bonds. Relative to a transfer of property, that, that occurred on October the twelfth, twenty twenty-three, when the final deed was transferred for about a one point three acre piece of property from the successor agency to the NPUA for a future power facility development on that particular property. And City Manager and I actually drove by there. I wanted to take a look at what that looked like and I even gave him some energy, engineering ideas, but by the way, I work for an engineering company, but I'm not an engineer. So, you know, you got to take that stride, I suppose. So the process for doing this is that you adopt a resolution that basically declares that all of the conditions precedent to the requirements related to dissolution have been met and clearly they have. All the money's gone, all the property's gone, everything's gone. And that you request dissolution. That request involves two other entities. The first is the Countywide Oversight Board and I've already contacted them on behalf of staff and arranged for a meeting, this will occur, their first meeting in, in June. I do not anticipate having a problem because when I told the staff member we're, we're working on it, he was, I could tell he got excited about it. This doesn't happen very often. So that's what, one less thing I think he's going to worry about. So he's very happy about that. They, I anticipate they will adopt that resolution. I'll be there to present that at the time. And then that resolution, once they give us a signed copy, give us a week or so, we'll send that to the Department of Finance and they'll, they'll take a while because they're very slow. Those state people are very busy. Well, that's what they claim. So anyway, it'll take a while. So I would suggest we will have the letter from the Department of Finance approving this, probably before the end of March. I promised that Candace, I would give her a copy of that if Patrick doesn't already because once that letter is in hand, when you get future council agendas, there'll be no reference to Sarda because that, that entity will no longer exist. So that's about how long this is going to take to get done. So we, in that process, by the way, you might imagine as the, as your successor agency consultant, among other things, I've done other good, fun things for, for Needles, just simply because I was asked. I've worked for two different firms, originally for Urban Futures from Orange County, the drive down there is horrible. Then I now work for TKE Engineering in Riverside. The drive is really great, you know, it's nice out there in the inland empire. So I've spent ten years doing this, but I didn't do it alone. I had a staff member who unfortunately couldn't attend this evening. She lives in Fort Mojave, so she could have come here, but there's a reason why she cannot. I want to mention her name. And when she started working with me, her name was Kathleen Robles, it's now Kathleen, Kathleen Cooper. She, she is married. So I think that's a wonderful thing. And then there are key people here, the names you will know, but I have to say their names out loud because I'm telling you without them, this couldn't have happened. And they are Rick Daniels, our former city manager, Patrick Martinez, Sylvia Maletti, Dale Jones, Barbara DeLeo, and Candace Martinez, now Clark, sitting right in front of me. So, and many others along the way were, were very, very helpful. I would say this, I come across a lot of cities where there's a lot of energy and support for carrying out governmental activities, but never the level of consistency that you have. Your staff frankly are fabulous, very helpful, always willing to do whatever was required as fast as possible. I'm not used to that. And I, I'm telling you, I like working for cities. I actually had to fire two. You said, what? That we didn't really fire him. I transferred him to somebody else in my, my firm. And you know what the reason was? Because they didn't care. This city cares. Their city staff people care. It has been absolutely an honor and a pleasure to work for you and work with them. And I know there's a few more things to do, I'll do, I'll miss that unless Patrick comes up with something else that he might think I can help on. So that, that ends my presentation. Unless I missed something, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and I look forward to your adoption of this resolution so we can get this matter moving on for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public comment regarding Sarda? If not, a public comment is closed. Counselors comment or anything?
Do we have to vote?
Yeah, we have to vote.
Nothing to.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eleven fourteen twenty-three, Sarda as read.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you very much. God willing, we'll lead again.
Adjourn the joint Sarda council meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Council consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion prior to council action. A member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items six through thirteen on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I would like to have nine and ten pulled.
I was going to say.
Ellen, did you have one or?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Um, staff?
Yes, members of the council in front of you for item number nine, we're looking at Vescas Company LLC. So currently the city has a couple audits taking place, one audit, the other one's a city audit. We were notified by the city auditor that we're no longer using them any longer. And so we went out to our, we got two audit, two able and willing auditors back. At the point in time where we took a look at the two auditors that are in front of us, we went ahead and even though we didn't take the lowest bidder, which was LSL CPA Advisors, we felt that it was important to have the next highest bidder, who is our current auditor for the NPUA, because we will save time with staff in doing duplication of the work. So at the point where staff has to go and recreate documents for the old auditor, for this other auditor that we're not currently working with, it just didn't make sense. So when staff came on and we looked at these, we sat down and took a look at it, really the four thousand dollar difference will be saved by the staff time that takes with associated with getting the documents together for, for the new auditing firm as opposed to working with the current auditor that is doing the NPUA audit. And so familiarity and basically duplication of work is the reasoning why we wanted to move forward with the, the next highest bidder, which was about four thousand dollars difference.
So down here at the bottom for the recommendation part, there's different numbers down there for the seventy, seventy-one and then the eight thousand, or eighty-five hundred. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so there's a contingency of five thousand that were included for the first year. And then there was a contingency of eighty-five budget for the sec, or excuse me, five thousand for each one. There's a contingency fee, say something comes in and we need, we need to have a cushion for funds that are needed for presentation or something, that's an additional work after they're looking underneath the hood. Again, this is a new firm that it's, we're working with them, but we want to make sure that we have a cushion there, that way we don't have to bring it back again to the council and take two bites of the apple. This way we have a little bit of a cushion, but this is the final, final, like we're not going to be going over seventy, we're not going to be going over seventy-one for those two years because again, it's important that we stick to those numbers and we, we keep our auditors in line.
And that's for two years, not seventy for each of them?
It's seventy, it's seventy for each year. So one fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three will not exceed seventy for the, and then for the upcoming twenty-four year will not exceed seventy-one. So these are for two different years. But again, we would, it'd be close for the first auditor, but again, familiarity and the duplication is why we wanted to go ahead and move forward with somebody we already are familiar with. We know they do good work and so we want to continue our relationship with them and have them be our auditors.
I have a question. We're, we're retaining them for the fiscal years ending twenty-three and twenty-four. Twenty-three is done. Is this, should it be twenty-four, twenty-five?
No, so we're currently in the twenty-three year. So we're, we're still, so just till we're on this, we are in the process of bidding for fiscal year twenty-two right now. And so we're, we're trying to wrap up that.
The numbers for the year. Okay, all right.
Yeah, the numbers aren't here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And so our recommendation is that we retain Vescas and Company for the audit for those two fiscal years.
Okay.
Okay, and then the second, any questions?
I do have one more. I do have more. The general fund, so we have eighty, did we not, we didn't budget enough because like beforehand, because we didn't anticipate it being this much more, is that why that happened?
We didn't have, we didn't know that the current auditor was going to bow out. And so when that, when that auditor bowed out, we did, we had to go back out to bid. It was probably, that's a good thing that we did that, we brought some new ones.
Okay.
Okay, and now with, for the second one, Brick Consulting Group LLC. So you all know I'm the new city manager and so it's important that anytime you take over an organization or you contribute to an organization or make it your own, I want to make sure that the skeletons in the closet are all cleared out. This firm will come in and help assist me in identifying things that need to be fixed. The current staff that we have in place can't do that kind of work. This is an individual who, the firm is highly skilled and able to help identify things that need to be amended or changed in the current processes that have been dealing it. I mean, not to say that we're doing any processes wrong, but it'd be good to have validation for what takes place at the current offices in our, in the finance department. So I need to bring on a consulting group to help assist with, with finding, you know, anything that is needed to be identified and will help our current staff. It's more of like a phone to friend as well. And so if one of our staff members doesn't have a question about when's the state audit due or when's it going to be submitted, those kinds of things, which we're currently going through, they'd be able to pick up the phone and call this individual, we'd be able to give that guidance because they've seen the movie and they're very well reputable. This individual is a very, and it's, she's got a couple folks, but the point person we'll be working with is a very reputable individual, has got a track history and assisting municipalities to clean up their shop. Not saying that that's the case here, but in the case where we do need to do that, it is identified, we're going to want to have somebody that has the expertise and feel that can do that move forward. And again, it's a not to exceed, I'm not saying that that's what it's going to take us, we won't go over that amount, but that's the amount we will have available if we need to utilize it for the services that are provided. So it's somebody to have in your back pocket.
Questions?
My, my questions are, what do you anticipate it being? How often do you anticipate using it? That's my first question. Then my other question is, where are we at in our general fund reserves at this moment?
So we do have, we do have the amount allotted for this to, we wouldn't bring forward you an item that doesn't have the reserve requirements. So by producing this in front of you, we do, we know we have the general fund amount to cover. That being, and then number two, this is a one-year period for a total of thirty-five thousand dollars. We don't anticipate doing this more than once. And so our goal is to just do a one-time in-depth audit to help understand where we're at and then have a phone to friend and get our team past the finish line for this one.
For them to learn.
Yeah, right.
Have we used this before?
We have not. This is something that the former city manager and myself were working on as he was heading out, that we needed to get somebody that has the competency to help assist us in our finance department to move this forward, not saying that we don't have a very competent staff now. This will just help bolster our team, kind of like when we have the building official in a consulting group that we use, the engineering firm, the TKE that we use, it's, it's just an additional help for our staff to be able to do their job because we are doing things at a higher level that we've never done in the past. I mean, we've got twenty million dollars with the grants that are being produced and those all got to be accounted for in finance. And so it's, it's just important to have somebody in our back pocket to be able to utilize those services and provide guidance and teach our team and build capacity to move forward.
Any public comment regarding any of these items that have been addressed? If not, public comment is closed.
I'll move, approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
That was for all the consent.
Right.
Yes.
Six through thirteen.
Six through thirteen.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Laundrie?
Yes.
End of council consent calendar. Regular council items, approve those interested to attend the Southern California Association of Government SCAG Fourteenth Annual Economic Summit on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. Staff?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you, there's the Fourteenth Annual Southern California Economic Summit that's going to take place on December seventh in Los Angeles. Mayor Jernigan serves as the delegate, is interested in attending this event. There'll be an economic update to help provide the, the city understanding where we're at in terms of the major economic factors that are taking place in the SCAG Southern California region. So there will be a report about from the individual that does attend, the mayor is interested, we're just trying to get an understanding of who wants to attend to be able to move this forward.
Make a motion to approve the mayor attending this.
Yes.
Second.
Oh, Patrick is asking if anyone.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A lot ago. Months ago.
I'm gonna skip out.
Did she want to go?
No, I said that was the point. Was see if anybody else wanted to go.
Over the button.
We have second.
Six seconds.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
Councilmember Laundrie?
Yes.
Just, I didn't realize I got everybody.
Task force on building and development. Staff report.
Yes, then mayor and members of the council. For maybe we've got a task force that was created by the city council back in 2021. They were, um, you know, with being on a border, we have different challenges that are faced for Needles in in California, as opposed to our friends across the border in Arizona. So as as the leadership of council belt, uh, basically brought these borders so that we could have a task force that is able to talk about fiscal stability, try to increase business overall for for business growth and development in our town. Uh, you know, we want to help as in general, by our mantra is to help streamline the development process and make it easy for our folks, especially because we have a competitive disadvantage from across the state to the other cities across without any springtime requirements, solar requirements, contractor issues. And so basically, these are the kind of questions or discussions that are going to take place of this task force. Uh, basically, the mayor, uh, has served on this. So Mayor Williams served on this, and then formerly Councilmember Terrell served on this task force. They are obviously no longer on the board. Uh, this would be a good opportunity to appoint two more folks so that we can get it, get together and talk about the housing development in the city. We have a lot of things in the in the hopper. But again, there's other, um, there's other opportunities to take a look at development in other places. So we would have those discussions and try to find ways to foster new private investment into non-residential and commercial development in our community. So I need from you to appoint two folks to this to replace Mayor Williams and former Council Terrell of this task force.
I would like to be appointed. Um, you have the former mayor, Williams, and, um, I'm out on these various economic committees. I would like to be appointed.
Yeah, and I'll do. I would like to be on this one since it's been.
You're already on.
You're already on.
You're already on. Well, I would like to be on. I'm good.
You're staying.
Oh, only two?
Yeah.
Well, I just, I need, no, I need three total.
Yeah.
I need two more, please.
I'd like mayor.
And Joanne.
And Joanne.
Joanne.
There's.
Joanne and then Ellen are both interested.
I don't really want to do.
So it's up to the, we need, we need, uh, we need to have an alternate if you'd like. But at this point, I need, I need three members, otherwise it becomes a forum. At that point in time, um, you can't, we got to have a meeting put together. Again, we will report back to the council, so the council will be involved. But it, uh, but these are just subcommittee meetings that are going to take place. So again, it's up to the council on how you want to move forward.
I'm I'm moved for Ellen.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
My second.
Well, Ellen and.
So what's your motion?
And mayor then, right?
Yeah.
To be on the committee. So be, so myself, Ellen and and mayor.
My second.
And call for the vote.
Yes.
It's probably one of the three.
Yes. Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
Um, city attorney report.
Yes, um, just briefly, um, some of the matters that we've been assisting the city with include uh, the MIAH matter. Uh, we also have been representing the city in connection with issues related to the Rio Buena Vista HOA. Um, in addition to that, we are working with city staff on the Otana Planet Green Matter. Also, we'll be representing the city in connection with the Wolfpack Inc. matter. We also worked on the lease that was addressed in closed session with Lamar Properties or Lamar Companies, I should say. And then also represented the city in connection with the settlement agreement that was reported at a closed session this evening with the, uh, Teamsters Local 1932. In addition to that, we have been, um, representing the city in numerous and continue to represent the city in numerous code enforcement actions and receivership cases. Um, some of those we've talked about in the past, such as the Best Motel and the River Valley Inn. Um, you know, there's sort of a rolling process. Some of them get resolved, some of them we win in court. Um, but there are others that are lined up as part of the effort that staff and code enforcement have undertaken at council's direction to clean up the city. And then also, um, we're assisting and have been assisting the city staff in responding to certain Public Records Act requests, um, assisting staff on public contracting issues, and also advising the city in connection with labor, labor and employment matters, uh, providing advice on conflict of interest issues as they, as questions arise, and also the Brown Act, and then, uh, providing the city with assistance in connection with the housing authority. And that's my report.
Thank you. City manager.
Yeah, just briefly, I I every week I send out a benefit report. You'll get those in your emails, uh, so you can be up to date on what's going on. But I want to share with you something that our utility manager, uh, wants, uh, to let everybody know about. There was a sewer manual maintenance program starting today. And so we're going to go jet back to areas that are identified, uh, uh, sewer manholes in these areas. So we looked at Bailey, uh, you've got, uh, you know, Aaron Drive, parts of Aaron Drive. You've got Washington, uh, you got L Street. And so these are some of the areas that are, uh, are going to be jet backed. And if you look at the other sewer manual maintenance program, from the first major back to stream, parts of Great Street, you've got Mills Highway. Um, and so again, this is to help keep system reliability for our sewer system. And so we're being very proactive in ensuring that we have, we take care of the manholes and system that we have. And so I just want to report that out, while that leads, you're actively working on that. And then you keep looking out to my, the report, also mail.
What is, last question? What is manhole, what do you do?
So you go in, you go down to the manhole, jet back the manhole out, take water and keep it clean. You just kind of maintenance it. And so it's, it's keep the, it's to keep the system alive. Of the sewer manholes. You want to keep them clean.
Keep the buildup, knockdown.
Right. You want to clean it out. Well, for the.
Tiny bowl.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, city manager. Uh, Councilmember Campbell.
I want to, uh, first of all, I, your son's is. Aiden, I would like to thank Aiden, who has kept us live tonight. We have been live, streamed, out there to the public.
Yes.
They have the log on and see our meeting as it's going, and they've been able to comment in here. So there are, there are people interacting. As people get more familiar with that, they can watch us. They can have their comments. We can read them. And I don't think we should be fun to them, but they're there. And we're we're grateful. Thank you. This is coming to us from Aiden, who happens to be Counselor McCorkle's son, but it's his own merit, and he's doing this for us for free. He's just getting us out there. And he is a high school student at Needles High School. So thank you very much. And we're glad you're here. Um, this weekend, I want to, a PSA this weekend, the, um, Needles Women's Club is having their annual soup, salad and and dessert luncheon fundraiser. And, um, yeah, we look forward to this every year because our ladies, you know, bring out their best soups. There's going to be five different soups there to try. It's from 11 to 2. And they're having a little tiny Christmas boutique in there. And so if you're out and about, share the information. It's on my Facebook. It's, Joanne's been posting it. It's on the Women's Club Facebook. If you grab that poster, please share it as other things. Um, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McCorkle.
Um, I really a lot. I definitely want to say that the Veterans Day event, uh, was planned very nicely, and I think drivers and group were setting that up. Um, that's something I think every town should do. So I was extremely excited to see it and see how well organized, um, it was. So I look forward to many more years of attendance.
Breakfast was great, too. It was good.
Um, and you know, I didn't really have anything. I think, I mean, I guess it's a good thing. I don't have anything to complain about. So. I'm done.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Merritt?
Um, the only thing I have is a, and I don't think I talked about this last time, but, um, the, I went to the grand opening of Jolted and, you know, it was a really, it was a really, it's really great to see another business opening in town. And I also went down to the Beefly Clothing Store, which is next door. So that's another great place. So just glad to see more businesses coming around and coming into town. That's all I have.
Oh, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Pope?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the Veterans Day program. I thought it was very nice in recognizing our veterans. Um, I don't really have anything else.
Councilmember Belt?
Um, December 1st is Christmas party for the city employees. Um, so we got the food taken care of. I know Ellen's doing the decorations. Joanne, you're still doing the gifts, right? We'll have to get that money. But if we can meet or talk about, I guess we'll text everybody individually to see if we can get just lined up. It's coming up fast.
Yeah, it needs some.
And, um, December 2nd is the downtown Christmas party. So if you want to get in the float, get a booth, that's coming up fast also. Um, and I think then that would be, that'll be it. Oh, and basketball tryouts for the rec center this Thursday. So basketball's coming up for local kids, you know, try out. It's fun. And, oh, we did go to, I got to go to Knott's Berry Farm with the high, the high school and the elementary kids to go to Cal State Long Beach. And I, I mean, I just, I'm really proud of our town, our community. We're taking sixth graders, getting them excited about college, going and seeing what it's about. It's really, we do good things here in Needles. We really do. Um, we got to go to Knott's Berry Farm with thousands of teenagers. It was very fun. Um, but just the experience, the kids were so excited with the college. I mean, that's the passion and the love you want to give your kids to, whether they go to school or trade school or anything of that sort, but just to get excited about learning something and seeing something new. So we do great things here in Needles, just more of the good things that we do.
Thank you. Councilmember Longbreak.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of things. On November 4th, Saturday, um, I was down there for the, uh, I guess the grand opening of our, uh, rock club is going to have a snake trail down at Train Park. And they actually had 25 members there, and they, um, are from Needles, of course, has its own rock club group like Havasu and Bullhead City. So I invite you to go down to Train Park and check out the snake. It's the snake on Route, on Route 66. Um, Veterans Day, um, was this past Saturday, the Needles Tourism. We just had just such great community support, um, for this. And it was, we had, um, speakers from the Eagles, from the Elks. Um, Dr. Cameron for the, the new, um, superintendent of the schools was the master of ceremonies. And, uh, most important, we had, uh, Noah Claypool, who was a 1998 graduate. Um, he's retired now. He was special forces. Um, just to hear his motivational speech was really, um, great for the veterans because he brought in the veterans that he was raised with here in Needles, his family, those he went to school with. So he really incorporated our local veterans. And we are going to obtain a copy of his speech and have it framed for. And on behalf of the city, I would like to offer condolences to the John Phillips family. Um, Johnny passed away on Sunday, and I know he will be missed as part of the business leader. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very. Meeting adjourned.